... smaller. Next meeting probably means applause. We're trying to get used to smaller meetings. At this time, seeing it's about 12 past 6:00, we've scheduled at quarter of 6:00 to reach, pick up that recessed meeting on September 18th. However, technically, we cannot. So at this point, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting of September 18th.
Motion by Governor.
Second.
Motion by Councilman, second by Councilman. Councilman to adjourn meetings. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meeting of September 18th, the recess is adjourned. Now, at this time, I'd like to add the two items that were on the recessed meeting, and that is the Verizon, we had a discussion on Verizon and condolences. So I'd like to add that to tonight's agenda, perhaps at the end. Looking for motion to add those two items, Verizon and the condolences.
I move to add the Verizon and condolences to our October 11th meeting.
Set that motion by Councilman. I'll take a second by Councilman Solano. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. With that, I'd like to have the, for roll call of tonight's meeting.
Councilman Berry. Councilman Acosta.
I got it.
Councilwoman Figueroa.
President.
Councilwoman Fonseca.
President.
Councilwoman Isaiah. Councilwoman Rivera. Councilwoman Swan.
President.
You have the former president.
Thank you. Well, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, we have three people signed up for public comment. The air is final, see you.
Table.
The State House here.
I just wanted to invite everybody to the fundraiser at the library. For those who don't know, we did the permanent conversation, but I just wanted to extend it again. I have flyers for everybody. So it's a week from this coming Saturday, December 25. All the money goes to the library. As you know, we fundraise about 50% of our annual running budget, about $100,000. So we hope to see everybody there in the evening.
What do you think?
Sure.
In the course of regularly, you have a place to drop off?
Yep, right in the front. Yeah, so there's a, are you talking like, you mean like books that have been rented?
Yeah, donate, actually, just donate.
Oh, donate, yeah, so anytime you want to do that, you can just contact the director and she'll make it time for you to drop them off. Yeah, absolutely. And what we don't use, we make sure that it goes to a place. So again, for sure. Thank you.
I'm going to do this. I have two things. First of all, thank you for having me in office and mentioning these classes here. I called the other day and told you, Judge.
Yes.
And he said that, and I've already, he said that the questions, when they do their presentation, there will be no questions from the floor. That I would have had to have written a question or stated a question to a city council, a city councilor, and then the city councilor would have asked the question from over there.
Hi, Judge, want to explain? I don't know anything about that, really. Yeah, so although this is public comment, probably not the best format, the phone call I received from this officer was asking me about how to get more information during the presentation. The presentation is to the council, so I had recommended contacting one of her council people, council members, with her questions or concerns to make sure that while the presentation is happening, the council is able to represent her concerns. Because obviously, we know the format is a presentation to the council.
So you could make it open, Bob, okay? I don't know.
Well, I mean, there's two ways, I guess, for Bob. If you have a couple of questions, I would suggest writing them down. You have only a couple of...
Or have another. I'm sure.
That's possible, that's true.
I'm sure it might be, will you come back for?
I...
If I come home one. We're more happy to...
Oh, we get there with them, okay. But you can thank colleagues as I often thank. Thank you, people, for being here. Thank you.
So that was my first comment. The second comment is absolutely beautiful part to have crossed before. But I was there a little bit back then. I counted today that of the dozen, or more than a dozen blueberry trees, blueberry bushes, I push blueberries, along the wall, nine are barely alive. And I was wondering if we were going to get our money back for that. Those were, I believe, $125 a piece for the bush.
Your positive, that the debt, your positive?
Oh, I'm, I didn't say my, I do, I do berries are not strong.
Makes you transport your blueberries so far?
I'm only fifth.
I thought you were going to make blueberry reserves.
I don't know, I...
So my question is, you're looking for...
Yeah.
I think, I think the city should...
I'm sure that the people that put them in would make good...
They would probably...
I'll have our chief order.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Need more?
Right, where's my bottle? There it is.
Hello, old townies and townies, and I'm here to ask you questions. Today, I'm not going to speak about the five.
All right.
But I have a cultural thing this that I hate to be addressed. Number one is the doggies on the five block. Today, I took a ride up to Dr. Gible's office, and on the way up, I saw four different, the doggies doing these on the five block. We should have some kind of a plan and maybe, I don't know what you guys think, and maybe both of, they should be fined that they can catch some. But I know the man put bags out and them, but nobody has no fine in the city. They're running it down, my thing. I mean, right on the main drag, right on Broad Street and right on Dexter, and I don't think it's very nice. I mean, if we want our city to be nice and we want to be proud of it, which we all are, we have to keep it clean. And also, they need trash. Why, I don't get it. But beer bottles, whiskey bottles. I'm a drinker, not a liar, but I mean... If I did, I'd be on the ground.
You just throw them out of your wheelchair?
Yeah, I'd be litter, I'd be littering. I'd be a little on the ground. But I mean, it's terrible. I mean, there's no need of that. We don't do, they don't do that in the house. Why don't somebody get after these people if they can catch them? But I mean, they should be, I think they should be fined, I don't know. I mean, after all, what can you do? I know the man, which is he doing a very nice job in everything he does, but it can't seem to get the first base. They, people just want to go in here and out the other rear. We just don't listen. And that's one issue I had, which may not be important, but I think it is. The second issue is handicap accessible buildings. Now, as you know, I'm in that family room chair, and I can't get into dumping donuts, doctors' offices. They don't have a festival. All they're going to do is make it accessible. I'm not the only one that has a chair. And I'm not a desirable, but people with walkers, kings, and everything. And I think that they should make it a little easier for us to, you know, get into the building to keep our apartment. Now, I think I fulfilled enough. The third issue is, I forgot. So I can't get up next time.
You forgot the first two.
My age shows. I can't get up next time, but that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, you want to move the presentation or copy the agenda?
I was concerned about the, about the abates. I'd like to give them on the way.
I read them, she gets them.
I read them on the, I like to do...
Yes.
Item, item, the abate, item seven, Roman numer seven, seven D. The abate, if anyone has questions on the abate.
I mean, this consideration is something for abates.
For abates. It's a two-room.
Is two or one due to a value?
You don't have to, we do it solidly.
Another one from the machine. One more for the COVID business. And another one.
I move to move.
We have a motion by Officer Fonseca to approve the abates collectively. Second by Officer Faye Rowan, and Councilman Solano. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. I have, thank you. Thank you.
Item four, we have none on this agenda. Item five, the second communication, one department report, Department of Enforcement, August 17th.
So we see.
And then, you can schedule bills and move on to your businesses' presentation.
That's good.
So we'll go on to your businesses' presentation. By the way, now, Officer Randy.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you for being here and thank you, Councilwoman Fonseca, for being a mover and getting up here this evening. Thank you, Rain Sarad, for bringing up your concerns regarding energy, solar energy. How are you?
Thank you. So my name is Patrick Truch, I'm from the Office of Energy Resources. I primarily work on energy efficiency. And I will attempt to be loud over the rolling thunder. Yes, and so we were expecting as well to have the infrastructure bank with us, and unfortunately, Ryan, who was going to represent them, went home sick, unfortunately. But we will cover all of the same materials, so don't worry.
And I'm Shawna Beal, I'm also with the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, and I focus primarily on renewables, mostly solar.
So I believe all of you do have printouts of the presentation, so we'll try to flip through that. Just as a brief introduction to our office, our office is the primary energy policy office for the state regarding energy. So again, we do energy efficiency and renewable energy. I believe there are extras, if the public would like any, please do grab them off the table. Thank you. We do a lot, and a lot of programs will be going into, do work directly with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. They're a positive entity. That primarily focuses on water, sewer, or the bridge, energy specifically, financing around building. What we're trying to present today are really a sweep of programs and initiatives and offerings that our office has put together for multiple areas. First off, the state does have their own action, so that has specific greenhouse gas emission reduction goals coming up in the next three years. So by 2050, we're really trying to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions statewide by 80%. To do that, obviously, we need municipalities. We cannot do this on our own, just the state.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing the speaker.
Yes, yes. Maybe there's no exception.
No, it's no exception.
And the folks that talk are going to be...
No, mine, you know, nothing.
Maybe that's that, no, here?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, also, I will be very loud, guys, when I call in.
Good.
There you go. All right. So as I was saying, there are multiple reasons why we are offering and presenting all of these programs and initiatives. Primarily, one, the state has greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. And so by 2050, we're trying to reduce our emissions by 80%. To do that, obviously, we need all the municipalities participate, along with residents, and everybody else. There's no way the state can do this by ourselves. In addition to that, we've had a lead by example initiative put forward by our governor last year, no, 2015, actually, the end of 2015. And that has specific goals for state facilities, so any public facility, we're trying to reduce the energy use and trying to increase our renewable energy production. And so, once again, we need hopefully municipalities to get there. So those are all the reasons, but I'd love to then go through all of the different offerings and initiatives that we pulled together and those shoots of goals.
Did you say 2050?
Yeah, 80% by 2050. So that's a lot of reductions. So we have a lot of work to do.
You might not be around there, mister.
I'm like, you can dedicate a power plant.
Oh, that's...
No power plant.
I didn't expect you to say that.
We're solar.
Solar plant, solar panels, whatever. 2050.
Yep.
They can't short their goals?
So we do have intermediate goals as well, though, right? So, yeah, by 2035, we want a 45% reduction. By 2020, we need a 10% reduction. We are on track to meet the 2020, but the one's past there. We have a lot of work to do. But first off, I wanted to start off with simply programs and initiatives that are available for your residents. And then eventually, later in the presentation, we'll talk about what the municipality can do. So first off, I did want to talk about income-eligible programs that are readily available through National Grid and our Department of Human Services. So first off, if there are any residents that are eligible for the A60 rate, so in other words, you have an income that is less than 60% of the median, which I believe for a family of four is about $55,000 a year, then you could, A, qualify to be on the A60 rate, which is a reduced rate for your electricity, which is important to know. In addition to that, you would be eligible for the Home Energy Assistance Program and the Weatherization Assistance Program. Both of those programs together can help, one, to help cover some of your heating costs, especially over the winter time. And then, the Weatherization Assistance Program can specifically give you access to weatherization for your home, so increased insulation, air sealing. It can also help to improve the efficiency of your appliances. So if you have an old refrigerator or an old freezer, and it really needs to be upgraded, they can do, this program can pretty much give you brand-new appliances for free. And again, can also cover the cost of insulating your home, which will help to reduce your overall energy costs and energy burden throughout the winter.
Is this only for homeowners, or is it for renters as well?
It's also for renters. So I believe the one caveat with renters is you may have to notify the owner of the building, and they'd have to approve the actual insulation or the work done. But yes, it is renter-based as well, yeah. Many renters do go through both of these programs. The other program I wanted to mention was also through National Grid, which is, in case you are in arrears or haven't been able to pay your electricity or natural gas bills, there are programs that can help to get you caught back up and put you on a payment plan. And if you are able to make consistent payments, they'll actually forgive a chunk of what is due. So that's important to know. In addition, there are shut-off prevention services. And so if you qualify for either having a medical issue that is emergency-based or you have an infant that is under two years of age, if you contact your utility, you can ensure that your electricity and your natural gas won't be shut off, which is important to know.
Are you working with George Wiley?
Can we ask questions at the end?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is my first meeting in court sometimes. I don't know how it works. You get to, you got to lay down the law. Leave my counsel.
So just because I'm going through this stuff very, very quickly, and I realize there are lots of requirements and eligibility issues, what I recommend to everybody is to simply go through your CAP agency or community action program. For Central Falls, that's Blackstone Valley. So anybody interested in any of those programs, please do reach out to your CAP, and they can walk you through all of it and make sure that you get access. So that's, that's income-eligible. Moving on to the next slide, there are also a bunch of programs for every other sector that you can think of. National Grid has free energy audits for residential homes. And so if you have any concerns regarding your electricity usage or ultimately, weatherization, so heating costs, I encourage you to contact National Grid, get a free energy assessment. Somebody will come out, an energy auditor will come out, look at all of the potential opportunity within your home and give you a report. From there, you can decide if you want to do anything or not. It's no obligation. And then from there, they give you access to incentives and rebates for the specific recommendations that they do. So that's a really great program. They also have very similar offerings for businesses and commercial entities, and it works very similarly. So once again, it is a free audit, and then you have to decide if you want to move forward with what they recommend. All right, so that's energy efficiency, which we always encourage going first with, is reduce your overall bills and then move on to renewable energy and install solar. So Shawna's here to talk about Solarize and just solar in general.
So the Solarize Rhode Island program is a program that's available to municipalities. We're actually in our fourth round, fourth year actually of this program. We've had 13 municipalities, sorry, 15 municipalities participate so far. We're going to be launching a fall campaign, starting at the end of the month, with three new municipalities. We may be offering a spring round of the Solarize Rhode Island program, so stay tuned for that. And then municipalities will be eligible to apply. One of the benefits of participating in this program is working with the municipality. We go out to bid for a solar installer for a limited time period, and we offer a reduced solar PV cost to residents of the municipalities that are participating. So I would encourage you to consider applying in our spring round, and we'll be sending out materials about that program going forward. So it's really a way to try to get residents to go solar in the most cost-effective way possible. Just other solar programs in general, there are two incentive programs available for customers in Rhode Island, and all residents of the state are available, are eligible for those two programs. The contact information is on the back of the slides, which are available, and I could spend the next two hours talking about solar, so I won't do that.
Could you just say what page we're on? You know, we're not on any particular page. There's no... Just so I can make...
We're on the slide with the pretty picture of the house with solar panel.
Thank you.
But I'm going to move on to the next one. That's the Commercial PACE program. Commercial PACE stands for Property Assess Clean Energy. And I'd like to commend the council for passing the resolution to participate in Commercial PACE. It was, I believe there's about 15 municipalities now that are participating. This program is available for businesses, and it's a way to help finance renewable energy and energy efficiency projects for commercial buildings. Moving on to Residential PACE. We will be working with the Infrastructure Bank on launching a Residential PACE program, hopefully coming in spring of 2018. It will be designed very similarly to the C-PACE program. You can do energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades to your property and pay for those measures on your property tax bill rather than get a separate bill from a renewable energy developer. So that's a financing mechanism. It's not really designed as an incentive, but it's a way to help you grow solar in a cost-effective way.
So that sort of sums up what we have on the residential side and commercial side, so for residents. And then the rest of the presentation is really focused on offerings that we have for municipalities, what you guys can take advantage of. So moving on to the next slide, and it looks like Portfolio Manager. And so what we've been offering over the past year and a half is we've been working very closely with the University of Rhode Island to offer all municipalities access to Portfolio Manager. It's a free online tool from the EPA that helps to benchmark your bill needs. And so it helps to track how much energy you're using on a monthly basis based on your bills. And then from there, it can do a bunch of analysis to help you determine which facilities have opportunities regarding energy efficiency. And so what we've been doing is we've been working with URI to provide free technical assistance for all municipalities to get onto Portfolio Manager and to load all of your accounts onto it. Currently, that is still happening through the end of this year. I believe you are on Portfolio Manager in terms of Central Falls has offered multiple accounts, but it hasn't been updated for the most recent year. So we are hoping that we can get a contact to connect with here so we can update all of your information, and that will provide you with further guidance on what buildings you might want to pursue in terms of energy efficiency projects or renewable energy projects. In addition to this, I wanted to mention that currently, the system is a little burdensome in terms of you have to pretty much manually upload your bills to this platform, which can be, as I said, burdensome and time-consuming. But starting later in 2018, National Grid is actually going to automate that process. And so if we can get you guys updated through sort of the beginning of 2018, then we could get it to it automated, and you guys could simply have that data consistently, and ideally without all the time that originally would have been required. So this is the time to do it. And if you're interested in sort of updating that, please do reach out to Mary Holberg. She's at URI. She's really handling most of the data upload. And her email address is right on this slide. So moving right along. Other items that we're offering, we do have a charge-up program, which is looking at transportation. And so what can charge-up offer? It offers incentives for electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging infrastructure. There are caveats regarding where the money can go in terms of, I believe, up to $60,000 can be used for the actual charging stations. And then there's a certain amount per vehicle that you can use as well. And then I think there is preference given to charging stations put in public areas so that the public can have access to them. So if you have any questions or have any interest at all in electric vehicles for a municipality, please do reach out to Ryan. He's our EV expert at our office, and he's really, really great about helping everybody through the application process. In addition to that, we have more resources regarding renewable energy.
So we know that it's really challenging for a municipality to write an RFP, issue an RFP, review them. So we have offered technical assistance to municipalities in the past. Bristol and Barrington just recently this year did a joint RFP, and we helped them with their RFP with scoring. I know that you guys applied to the Efficient Buildings Fund around one, two years ago for both solar and for wind, and that probably was not an easy process for you to go through to issue that RFP for renewable energy. So if you're interested, we can help you write the RFP. But above and beyond that, we can also offer assistance with hiring an energy consultant, because we might not have the technical ability to be able to review all of those applications. Bristol and Barrington actually listed 16 applications, and then they decided to get a consultant to help them evaluate them. So we would recommend that you do that step first, and then they'll be able to help you throughout that whole process. And so we can help you procure one of those companies as well.
On a similar note, we do have purchasing mechanisms that we set up specifically for the state. And so, as I mentioned before, the state has a lead by example initiative, which means that we're trying to do more energy efficiency and renewable energy projects ourselves on state facilities. And to sort of speed up that process, what we've done is we've created master price agreements or continuous improvement lists. And so what we've done, is we've gone out to the market and we've asked for sibling qualifications for companies. And then if they need a certain standard in terms of qualifications, that they can make it onto this list. And so we have multiple lists. We have an MPA 508, which is for turnkey energy efficiency projects. And so if you want to use this, it would simply be going through state purchasing, which should align all of your state purchasing requirements that you have for municipalities. And it streamlines the process by already giving you a list of your qualified vendors, and you only have to get a certain number of quotes depending on the overall cost of the project. So we have a list for energy efficiency projects, as I mentioned. We also have a list for small-scale renewable energy projects. So if you have a smaller building that you want a small set of solar panels on, that's where I'd recommend you go through CR 44. If you have a larger sweep of multiple buildings that you want to do energy efficiency and/or renewable energy projects in, I'd encourage you to look at CR 23. That's a list of pre-approved energy service companies. And so their model is to do large-scale projects and ultimately, pay for those projects through the savings that you achieve through the project. So, yes, lots of options. If you have any questions about using them or you have a different project in mind, please do reach out to our office, and we're more than happy to walk you through the details and look at... and the guidance documents for each of those different lists. In addition to that, I think you guys already applied, as we mentioned in round one, for the Efficient Buildings Fund. I believe you guys were able to procure your streetlights without having to go through there. It was just great, thank you for doing that, that was awesome initiative. I'm sure there was lots of savings there too, it was really impressive. That said, I think the Efficient Buildings Fund is still up and running. If there are any groups of buildings or large-scale projects that you want to bundle together and needed financing for, feel free to, again, reach out to our office if you're interested in applying in a second round. Again, more than happy to help pull together whatever information you need for that. Yes, so I was like, at the very, very end of this presentation, we'll talk about how we have free energy audits to help you if you want to use the Efficient Buildings Fund. Moving on, just more general information for municipality. So we have a whole slide dedicated to the Green Buildings Act. This is simply to remind everybody that if you are building any kind of new construction or doing a large-scale renovation, there is a law in place already called the Green Buildings Act that requires that construction to meet LEED certification standards or greater. It has a different set of standards for school new construction as well. I'm calling this out simply because by the end of this year, in the early part of 2018, we'll have a stretch code document available that will help municipalities to comply with the Green Buildings Act and at the same time maximize the incentives that you can get from National Grid for new construction. And so if you're at all, considering you're looking at building, new buildings or doing large renovations in 2018, I would encourage you to look for the stretch code document that'll be on our website, and to use that again to maximize what you can get from National Grid's programs. In addition to that, sort of looking future, we also have a slide dedicated to aggregated energy procurement, because our office tends to combine all of the bills for the state for both electricity and natural gas. By doing that, we've created quite a large demand. And so every so many years, we go out to auction to try and get the best price for supply for both natural gas and electricity. So we have two separate auctions that happen, I believe, about a year apart. And so the next auction is for natural gas in 2019. If you guys are at all interested in adding to that demand list and trying to, again, bundle as much demand as possible to get the best rate from the market, please do reach out to George. He's a member of our office, is leading the lead-by example initiative work, and he runs these reverse auctions every so many years. He does a really great job of creating really great costs for the state. So the more municipalities that want to add, the better. Again, the more you can aggregate your demand, the better the market will most likely produce in terms of pricing. Alright, last couple of slides, literally last two pages. We've gone through all of these programs and all of these initiatives and lots of options. And what we try to do is we try to award and honor municipalities and state agencies that have been able to take advantage of them and have done a very good job to move forward. So we have lead-by example awards on an annual basis. We are hoping to have another one in springtime of 2018. I know you guys have already done streetlights, which have already passed the C-PACE as well. So I would encourage you, as you continue to sort of lead in energy efficiency and renewable energy, to please do apply. Look for, again, on our website, we'll have applications starting in the beginning of 2018. And please do apply so we can publicly honor you for all the good work that you've been doing. Lastly, in terms of next steps, first off, I do believe that, I already mentioned that we'd love to update your information on Portfolio Manager. So if you could give us a contact that Mary could reach out... Oh, perfect, excellent, we love you, raise your hand. Great, thank you, no, thank you, that's awesome. And lastly, I've been able to work with National Grid and the Infrastructure Bank to pretty much offer all municipalities that we've been able to give a presentation to, five free building energy audits. So comprehensive energy audits, that would, again, help to identify projects that you would want to move forward with in terms of energy efficiency. So if there's one particular person we could connect with to maybe identify those buildings, alright, you're gonna be the go-to, I love it. Then hopefully we could at least get you some free information, and then from there, we can decide whether any of these programs can help you move forward in accomplishing those savings. I think the last slide is just simply our contact information. So again, if you have any kind of questions or concerns or you're interested in using any of the programs, again, described, please do not hesitate to reach out if we're here for. Lastly, are we able to open...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if we can limit the questions to two or three tonight, and then you have the contact information, if they have further questions, I think using that contact information would be best. So anybody have two or three questions?
I have two questions. I'm unfamiliar with the Infrastructure Bank, and maybe other folks are, so what is that?
Yeah, so it's a quasi-state entity. So what they primarily do is they actually, they function as a bank for the state specifically, and they try to do large-scale financing products. And so specifically, they've been working in sort of sewer and wastewater for a really long time. They were, they used to be known as the Clean Water Authority. Yes, good job. And so now they've actually, somewhat recently, have been expanded into their scope via statute so that now they can do energy efficiency and renewables too.
Thank you. My second question is, are you working closely with our Lieutenant Governor, who's been very visible and active on many issues, but more quite recently on this energy? And also, are you working with the George Wiley Center, based in Patoka, and other centers that already are doing this, because I'm just wondering about the ground game?
So the Lieutenant Governor's Office proposed several pieces of legislation this past legislative session in our office. Specifically, our legislative liaison worked closely with Paulette Hamilton, who's his new chief of staff, to work on some of those pieces of legislation. I don't believe many of them moved forward. If I recall correctly, but we anticipate a very active legislative session next year, so we'll probably be working with him again on some of them.
And you guys are essentially lobbyists, so what is your role there?
We're the state agency, so we're the policy arm for energy in the state. So we only have one staff person working on legislation, luckily the rest of us don't. Regarding your second question about the Wiley Center...
The George Wiley Center?
Yeah, I'm not too familiar with what they're working on.
They work on energy efficiency for low-income people.
Right, yeah, so a National Grid has...
So that's right in your wheelhouse.
Yeah, exactly, my wheelhouse, not hers.
Well...
Exactly, and so National Grid actually has a great relationship with the Wiley Center, and so their energy efficiency programs, they do work very closely with them to make sure that they're gaining access. Yes, our office helps to give oversight to National Grid's energy efficiency programs. So if you know of any kind of concerns or if they're not communicating well, please do let us know, that's where we're supposed to be helping.
And thank you for your time and presentation.
Of course.
I'm primarily concerned about my energy bill, not efficiency. It doesn't apply, it doesn't apply to me. But getting solar on residential, not city, you know, city's gonna do what it has to do. But for a personal homeowner, does the Office of Energy Resources have any help for that? Like choosing, even choosing, you must have a list of reputable solar companies, you know, recommendations, price list. I'm not even sure, you know, I would love to get into it. I mean, I think everybody should get solar, everybody has sunshine all day long.
So we do have a list of solar installers on our website that have a renewable energy professional certificate, which is a unique certification in the state of Rhode Island. Other neighboring states don't have this. We actually certify that they have one of seven criteria listed on our website. And I believe there's over forty installers listed on our website. Another website that you could go to is energiesage.com.
Energy Sage?
S-A-D-E. And they're sort of a clearinghouse for solar. You can upload your electricity bill, and you can have solar installation companies bid on your specific location. So those are the two resources that we're going to do.
And I want to make a tiny little plug, because I know you said that you're concerned about your energy bills, and you don't think that energy efficiency can help with that. It definitely can. Ideally, you would go and do an energy efficiency program, again, through National Grid, and that would help to lower your bill just originally. And then you would go and install solar so that you can get the full benefit. Ideally, that would reduce the cost of your solar installation.
Now, I heard that the state cut that program, the energy efficiency, they're not doing it.
So, there is a...
And you're telling it here, so...
No, no, so there is, there was a little bit of concern in terms of 2018. Some of the funds from the energy efficiency program were diverted to general revenue. That said, I primarily have been working very closely with National Grid to ensure that that energy, those energy efficiency programs are as robust and equally available as they were this year for 2018. So they will be available.
Without the funding.
So no, not without the funding, it's reduced funding. And what we've done is we've unfortunately had to scale back some innovative stuff that we were going to do. But that said, the existing programs will still be there for 2018 for exactly that reason. And especially with the timing of sort of the rate hikes that are happening. So please do take advantage of them, I think that they're going away, they're only there to stay.
So thank you again for being here, we really appreciate it. Yeah, I know you mentioned the A60, and you said it's less than around $55,000? As income, right?
Yeah.
As a city, I think our income's like $35,000 or something. Would we be eligible as an entire city for a program like that?
No, it is on a customer basis, so it would be for each person, yeah, unfortunately.
That's ask.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
Do we have this information on the website? And which, also, I'd like to know if we have, which municipality is participating? Do you guys have that on the website, if I go to energiari.gov?
So we don't necessarily have this particular presentation up, but I do think we can send it electronically to you guys if you would like to have it. And that way you can have it in a live link as well.
Yeah, I would. Also, so that shows which municipality is participating, right, on the website.
In what programs?
And the solar.
With Solarize? Oh, with the Solarize program? Yes, so all of the, all of the metrics from the past four years are posted on the Energy Auctions.
Thank you for being here again. I just wanted to ask a question that also a woman, Fonseca, asked about the A60 program. And you say it's up to $55,000 for a family of four. But that pricing would, depending on how much money their family make, I mean, if they make $20,000 or $55,000, the pricing gonna be depending on that?
Right, so, no, it doesn't depend. The A60 rate is simply a reduced rate for your electricity, and you simply qualify to get that rate if you are a family of four and you are under $55,922 in your total year. If you want, again, that's for a family of four, then it lists out all the family sizes if you go to the website. So National Grid has that on their website, also the CAP agency should have it on their website. And also the Department of Human Services also has that information. So please do look that up, because I think that's very important for anybody who needs assistance.
I have a question. I live in a high-rise, right? How is that gonna work? Like, we don't pay a lot of bucks. Isn't that gonna borrow a lot of money, changing over to the solar system? It's such a blow, where we own buildings, our own house. So isn't that gonna entail a lot of money to switch over to that solar system? But homeowners as well, with high-rises?
So in terms of, in terms of energy efficiency, so before Shawna answers the solar part of it, if you live in a multifamily unit or a high-rise, as you say, as long as the owner of the building is, will allow the work to move forward, then you can still participate in all those programs and get the area weather-wise in terms of extra installation. You do not need your, the building owner's permission to simply get sort of new light bulbs or some of the direct install measures that they can give you. So I would still encourage you to reach out to National Grid, even if you haven't been able to connect with your landlord or your building owner. And they can at least come out and give you advanced power strips, low-flow showerheads. There's a bunch of stuff that they can simply install without getting that permission, because it's not structural in any way. From there, they would require permission from the owner, though, to actually like blow in insulation or make things tighter. That's the energy efficiency side of things, though?
So I actually also want to mention that I believe the Housing Authority joined with the city in our lead for solar. So our municipal energy is solar, and in our RFP, the Housing Authority was part of that. So they're also using it. Alright.
Sweet.
Anybody else? Jean, do you put a solar panel in your wheelchair?
I won't be living by this time. But I get thinking about, you know, the people, now I won't be a lot.
We hope you're alive.
I hope so, but I haven't made that.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, thank you so much, thank you. Thank you. You're welcome anytime in the future. Questions made up, for me to go through, Colleen or whoever.
Okay, yeah, I might, I'll definitely refuse it.
So the next item is City Council, City Council's license permissions. You have petitions for licenses, you have four. And Mr. President, as we have discussed, none of those stuff comes here, but I can be directly to the authorities. First one is a Class A restaurant license. For a million people, this business says Club Casa de la Vida. It's in Pizza Nica Street. There is a pre-licensed Class D, Calencio Nica Bakery Food. Eighteen Broad Street, Class C Variety License, Port Nica. And it even says more, Daily Community Market. And then the fourth line is Class C Variety as well, Tony's Market, Fruits and vegetables. That's the name of the business at 135 Washington Street.
Everyone has the applications, I believe. Obviously, there's no problems here with taxes or anything, so... What is your pleasure?
I move to...
Individually, collectively? Any problems with any... Corrector? The motion to approve all Class A, Class B, Class C, Class C collectively? Any, second by Frank, any discussion? Again, we didn't require any of these new licenses, and there's no problem with taxes.
No, no.
They did all they had to do regarding health certificates, et cetera. With that, a little favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Size, age, hearing, unsigning, so pass. Next item?
Advertising, reservation, request for a cold beverage, Class E, vintage, kitchen license from Budari, a regional Venezuelan restaurant, to here at the Takeria, Maracana. And you have the application in front of you, and hold the app bench in the corner of the license. How president's desk?
Hello? Any questions for the applicants? Everyone has the application. So you're basically just transferring your alcohol...
Are you closing?
Well, they're actually gonna be conducting business. They're gonna have a lot of them, they have some food. They're coming in as a Takeria.
Wait, so Budari's still gonna be, I'm confused.
No, Budari will no longer be there.
No longer?
So you said they're coming in too?
They're gonna take over, you know, they're gonna take over the business.
Okay.
As a whole. Not just the, they're not just gonna take, you know, the beer and wine, they're gonna take over with the food and all that as well.
They're taking over the whole operation.
Yeah.
You opening up another restaurant here?
No, my plan is to open up a private, that is my plan, yes.
Must go a little farther?
Yeah, four miles, only four miles.
What are you planning this transition coming up soon?
Well, based on what you guys told us tonight, we have no date. Based on what you guys tell us tonight, if you guys give us a room tonight, I have... Just based on what you guys tell us tonight, if you guys give us a room tonight, I have spoken time, it'll be November 1st. If not, then, you know, we have to see another day.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, I would like to ask a question. So you transferred in the business of them, it's going to be a taqueria, but you also applying for a liquor, seven liquors in the store?
Yes. Well, they, I'm transferring that beer and wine to them as part of the, you know, the deal, yes.
So on here it says 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM. You're going to open up at 5:00 o'clock every day, and close at 1:00 AM. So when are you going to sleep?
I second that.
Do you have another business, or just first business?
First time, so you are opening? You're going to open from 5:00 to 1:00 AM?
They want to make, they want to do breakfast, they want to make, you know, they want to explore making breakfast. Because I spoke with them, me being there at the time, you know, the four years, I suggested that they do something different. So they want to, they want to, they want to try out doing breakfast, you know, like the Spanish style, like, you know, racheros, things like that, in the morning, see if that works out for them. You know, obviously, it's trial and error. If it doesn't, then they'll just do the lunch and the dinner, you know. But I suggested that they, you know, they put their hours in now, that way they don't have to come back and, you know, do it all over. Like, I kind of did that in the beginning myself, I had these crazy hours too, and then I saw what worked, but it worked, and I just adjusted accordingly. But I suggested they do the same. But I don't see that being necessary, you know.
Yeah, how many employees do you plan to have in that?
Well, there's three partners.
Three partners?
Three partners.
So between you, all three, you're going to take care of all the hours that you're going to be working?
So it'll be the three then, I guess, yeah, initially, and then?
Okay, no problem. Could I make sure that, could I make sure the person, the figure here?
Couldn't that be translated for those who don't speak Spanish?
The question I was really asking in English, I just don't speak in Spanish, so I don't know. How many employees do we plan to have in that establishment? We always will come business in central cities, and small businesses are afraid that they stay in the city, the way it's going, so. We always applaud the new, 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 which is the best of all, and, and, I'm looking for motion to vote.
Anyone else? Elba, you don't have it outside anyway, you know the sandwich boards?
No, no, yeah, no, no, no.
Just a lot of, you can't put your stuff on the sidewalk. Do we have a motion?
I second.
I have a motion by Frank, I hear, Ms. Solano. Second by Councilman Conseca. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair vote aye, nays. Hearing none, seeing none. That's so hard.
Which of you?
Get some sleep now. Sleep for a couple of days.
Yes.
Okay, we got backtrack.
We're almost there. Iteming is the first house, there was none, but I will go back to scheduled bills. So we have resolution requesting a study on the vision of the speech demonstration in Falls, and the surrounding documentation of monuments in Falls.
Is everyone ready, or do you want to wait for confirmation from him? Unfortunately, no. I think that's motion, please. I mean, a few people need an explanation, fairly self-explanatory. I guess he's asking for maybe the planning department to help out, and the city clerk's office to see exactly that way. Names of various statues, I guess, mine. It's only a resolution, so it's a good promotion.
I move to approve the resolution.
And promotion by Councilman Conseca. Second, second by Councilman Solano. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair vote aye, nays. Hearing none, seeing none, so pass. Next item?
It's resolution of some falls, signatures and condolences, and these are the ones from last month. All the names, Paul Vadaj, Michael Cole, George Sankey, Philip, Dave St. Pierre, Bruce, and Thomas, Basil A. Donato, Frank J. Monmaro Sr., Carolina Pano, and Teresa Korn. And these are all introduced by Councilman Thomas Azay.
Up with that, I'd like a moment of silence for the names that were just read, in the All right, thank you. Motion, and that's the resolution of condolences.
I move to approve.
Motion by Councilman Conseca, by Councilman Peter Rose. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Aye. Aye. We are the nays, nays, hearing none, seeing none, so pass. Next item, man.
Second, I think.
Nope, we got to jump to the, we have two items from the-
Ideas of one, the first one, and then the second one, and some of the last meeting as well. It's going to consideration petition by National Grid and Verizon for commission for joint hold location on property. I move to approve.
To give permission, we have inside Councilman Conseca, we can put a second one. Second by Councilman Solano. Any discussion? Basically, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair vote aye, nays, hearing none, seeing none, so pass. Anyone? One or none?
And I did a condolences.
And I go, thank you. No correspondence?
No correspondence.
Anyone? Lot of good, lot of good going on. That's all I can say. Ah, the park is moving along, they're about eighty percent on the offensive memorial park, and hopefully it'll be ready by Veterans Day, which was kind of a great celebration. Don't forget the tea of the, your fun tea, is it Saturday or something?
It's a week from Saturday.
The 21st, right? The 21st?
The 21st, yep.
What was that?
6:30, 8:00.
There's the flyers up there.
Yeah, we got, yeah, I just tried to put them. Anyone else?
I just want to recognize Councilwoman Maria Rivera and one of our residents, Melissa Galgol, for putting on a great peace walk a couple weeks back. It was a really good event. We had youth seniors all walk, all walk to Hickson for a very good cause, so I want to applaud those efforts. I want to thank the city for everything that you guys are doing for the residents, for the community. And I also want to thank everyone who helped out today for our job here, who was very successful, and went to Columbus.
Thank you. Looking for a vote again?
One, second.
Thank you for recognizing what we have to use. Hopefully next meeting, you might be back.
You guys, I don't know, I suspect. Yep. I heard, watch, chew the belt.
Do you want one for the building? Nice to see you.
Did I? Oh, yeah.
I prefer to buy my own.
You don't think it's a good idea to look at a little, excellent, that's awesome.
You look great.
Including, I gotta get my, you just take those stickers.